Good morning, everybody. Approval of the minutes. Did you all look at the minutes?
Well, I didn't. I didn't get.
We didn't get the package here tonight, so.
So I guess I better not.
Look at motion.
Too bad down there.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what happened.
I don't know what happened. You got it.
There was two sets of minutes, though, right, Marlese?
Yeah, there's a. That tells.
Oh, we have. There was a short one just for the little needle for the gravel on with the National Guard.
Yeah, you're right.
I would make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Okay, second by. Miller, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so that's both of these taken care of. Control of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Miller makes a motion. Second or?
Second, huh?
The Gartner. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay, motion carried. Old and unfinished business. What have we ever met?
Emmett County.
Oh, that was Cecil.
Huh?
That was an elected authority member. Taylor was the last one.
Yeah, I. Did you talk to Cecil? Because I did, and she said she was gonna accept the position.
Yeah, I talked to her a little bit. I said if she had any questions, I'd talk to one of the other members of the board. She said she. Yeah, she said she was.
She told me that they had a family funeral in Idaho or something that she. Because she, the reason I talked to her, she seen me at my shop, and she walked up and she said that she's not gonna make the meeting, but that she would accept the position. I said, that's the main thing, because I said then we'll.
She did say she'd take it.
Yeah, she said she'll take it. They had a sudden family deal in Idaho to go to, and so she won't be here, so.
Oh, she shouldn't be.
Yeah, so I guess I would make the motion to.
Accept Cecil.
Appoint Cecil Long to the Housing Board.
Okay, is there a second to it?
I'll second.
Second by Gartner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Cecil Long, okay. Appointed.
Cecil, either side.
Another question, since it is kind of old unfinished business with appointments, but I was pretty sure when we did our appointments at the beginning of the year that we, that I accepted the Board of Health position again.
I've got the old ready, I'm just having I just sign it because it doesn't take it back to August 1st.
Yep, because it came up at our last meeting that, and I was like, well, I'm pretty sure that was clarified, but yeah, that's.
You were appointed in January.
Yep.
I did.
Okay, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure, because my memory was like, I thought they took care of it.
All good?
Yep.
Emmett County Housing Board, okay, that's taken care of, excuse me. Brad, you have a video testimony report? Morning, Brad.
Morning, gentlemen.
Do you have a copy of his reporting here, Matt?
Yep. Yes, you got it?
Yeah, you're good. Oh, go ahead, I'll.
Okay, gentlemen, this is for the second quarter, April through June. The numbers are pretty much on point as the previous quarter and from previous second quarters. It's pretty steady. They're about the same. They're maybe a little variant here and there. Probably the biggest difference is taskings that the veterans have come into my office has been a, there's a little more paperwork involved in it, but we're doing what we can do, getting what we can. Obviously, the non-veterans is a bigger number of veterans coming to my office. Attended the state training, again, that's usually three days. It's in Fargo. In April, in the fall, it's in Bismarck. It moved from Mandan. Quarterly LMS training and video security training for the computer stuff. About the only thing I might, this is kind of down the road, but you'll see it, I think at the end of the year, I'm gonna do, change its format and give you a little idea on previous year's numbers, so you can kind of see what we've done previous years to this year. I thought of that last year when I was sitting in here. So that's something that I could do it for the third quarter if you'd like to see that too, if you want, but this is it. Snapshot, if you have any questions for me.
I see you do home visits. That's a nice thing to do, to visit.
I try. It doesn't happen as often as I'd like.
Right.
Because it certainly breaks up, sitting in an office all day.
Yeah.
When I get an opportunity, I do, I pretty much jump at it, so.
That's good, Brad. You're doing awesome job.
I was just thinking about, I think my second office in Hazleton is DFC because I seem to meet a lot of veterans. That's where I go when.
Do you? Okay.
Yeah.
Have a cup of coffee, sit down, one.
Yeah, so that works out pretty good. With that, question for me, concerns?
Keep it up.
Yep. How you doing? I hear a lot of positive, Brad.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. Have a good day.
Next on the agenda is the Strasburg Care Center, support for a new building.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
I want to tell you a little bit about myself and about the Strasburg Care Center, then I'll open up for questions at the end. Strasburg Care Center was built in 1962. It's sixty-five, about sixty-five years old.
Sir, can you move the mic up?
Pull the mic up tighter to you.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay, Strasburg Care Center was built in 1962. It's approximately sixty-three years old. The care center for Strasburg, we give quality care. In 2023, Strasburg Care Center received the Bronze Award for the state of North Dakota and throughout the United States for the quality that we give down there. In 2024, we applied for the Silver Award for Quality, and we received the Silver Award. I think we were one of four in the state of North Dakota that receives a quality award for the Silver, which in essence resolves in some monetary monies that we'll receive because of our high standard of quality. There's approximately 400 points for the Quality Award, and this past year, we received 389. And I don't want to get into all the details, but we reduced 11 points off of being a gold star, so I'm very proud of that fact. We've been a five-star facility this last year. Strasburg Care Center has always given great care. They've been in that four to five-star region, which is how nursing homes are graded by the federal government for the last 20 years. A couple side notes, you know, being sixty-four, three years old, there's only been six administrators at the Strasburg Care Center. And I'm sure one of you or all of you have had some type of family members that's been to the Strasburg Care Center in over the past sixty-four years. With that, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the building. The building was built in 1962. With the building, our infrastructure has been depleted. We have four boilers. Out of the four boilers, we've replaced one boiler this last year, which cost us $80,000. And those are the old fuel injector boilers, so we're still running the old fuel in those boilers. We still have three more boilers to go, just like all the nursing homes built in the 62, 63, 64 era. They're all built out of cinder block, and they all almost look identically the same. With that, our pipes are all behind the cinder block for our plumbing, and now that plumbing will be pitfalls in the piping. And so in order for us to fix that plumbing, we have to tear out a wall in order, in order.
He's laughing because I know. I've had to work on it a few times. That's.
All the plumbing is in that block walls.
Boy, that's hard to find, isn't it?
And if it leaks and goes underneath the floor, it could go to roof before we actually find where the actual leak is coming. So to put a new roof on there, you know, we've had, the board has always tried to do that in sections, but with all the rain and the weather that we've had with the heat, it, you know, it's dilapidated. And so it would cost right at $1 million just to put a roof on, but why, in my opinion, why fix a band-aid when the electrical is shot? Everything for the infrastructure is just overused, it's life service.
Is that copper, like?
Yeah, it's copper galvanized. It's all outdated. Every, it's not just the plumbing. I mean, the heating system is outdated, the electrical system, I mean, the.
Yeah.
And it's hard to renovate because of the block building. It's not like your standard sheet rock and wood walls where you can gun into them and replace things. I mean, this is.
Treadmill was very instrumental, but.
Yeah.
He was a board member.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excuse us.
No, you're fine. With that being said, you know, the newer, the baby boomers that are coming up now, they want to have a new building. They want to have new. We lost two residents in just this past month to Napoleon, to their new building. I've had a couple family members tell us ours looks like an institution or jail with the cinder block walls that we currently have there. It's served its purpose for the last sixty-three years, but it's time for new. Ike Bailey is our financial auditors, and they put this scenario together for our board. This past January, the state of North Dakota, we get, we have more rules and regulations for nursing homes than what they have for nuclear plant in the United States. Again, you know, part of that's true. I mean, that statement is true, but part of it is because we protect people's lives. We're there at their end of life, and, but yet we still don't meet all those regulations that they have. It's just ridiculous, and hopefully that will change in the future. So what Ike Bailey said, told the board is, this, starting of January 2025, we're losing $25 per day per resident, which for the residents that we had this last year would equate to $300,000, which we're gonna move straight off the bat for the next year because of the age of our facility. The state of North Dakota pays on the age and how new your building is, and right now we're competing nothing for ours. So with that being said, Ike Bailey did some really nice auditing for us, and they're the number one in, to me, in the United States. They're all over the United States as far as the situation. And so with that being said, other counties in North Dakota have out-doubt their nursing home or hospitals. Stanley Nursing Home and Richardson Nursing Home, their counties just helped them out with their new building projects. Ratten did a sales tax, and it's not uncommon, and Canute did a mail levy. When I was in Nebraska in 1991 for 10 years, I was the first administrator to go to the county and ask if we could get a $3 million mail levy put in place to help our rural facility. At that time, the county commissioners didn't feel comfortable making that decision on their own, so they took it to a special vote of the voters and asked the voters what they thought. That passed you, not unanimously, but it passed by the margin that we needed, and it passed, and that, that is now paying off, that mail levy, and that facility is thriving and doing well. So with, with that, we are looking at building a brand-new $18 million building.
Eighteen?
Eighteen million. And with the eighteen million, we're short about $2,671, and that's why I'm here today, is to ask you if you would help us with, and I'm just gonna round it to $3 million to make it simple. And so I'm asking for a $3 million, however you want, we'd like to set it up over the next 25 years. And I know that's a lot to throw at you right at once, and so I hope this is a discussion and a long dialogue that we can have for years to come.
I got a question I want to ask. At eighteen million, how big a facility you build to house how many people? Because currently, what is the capacity of this home right now? Because they sold a lot of beds, did they not?
We did not sell them. We put them on layaway, so they're on layaway until October, and we just put six more beds on layaway, starting today. As of July 1st, we're licensed for 30 beds and six basic care beds. The basic care beds are the same as a skilled bed, so if we ever were full or skilled, we could change those six basic care beds into a skilled bed by just calling the state and saying we would like to reallocate the beds. Just by calling to say we could reallocate those.
Beds.
Beds, and they could become skilled beds.
Should they, you'd have how many units?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. So where would you put it? Not the same place? No, you couldn't do that, really?
Yeah, do you have land for it here, or does somebody?
We're looking at a couple different spots. Actually, what we are looking at is putting it on the same place.
Okay.
We would take down the old unit, that would be the A Wing, and that addition that was built in 1991.
Oh.
And tear that down and going further to the west, I believe that is.
Oh, okay.
And then tearing down the other half after, we would put all of our residents on the B Wing, if you're familiar with the facility. And so our B Wing right now is housing our six basic care beds, and we've closed that down. And so as of today, we have 27 residents. We have the possibility of two more coming in the next couple of weeks. And then just when I left, I heard the possibility of maybe one coming from Seattle.
Okay. Would you keep the capacity the same with your new building, or would you increase?
No, we would keep it the same, and we would keep those other beds on layaway in case we ever did want to increase it. And so the best option that we would have is with 36-bed facility, again, 30 of that would be skilled, six would be basic care, but we could just roll those basic care right over into skilled, so we wouldn't have to do any remodeling or any building. North Dakota's the only state in the United States that has basic care beds. The federal government came out about, I would say, eight years ago and said, "North Dakota, you're doing it all wrong when the other states aren't, that we need to have basic care beds. We don't have enough options up here." And for whatever reason, those are the rules that we have to go by.
Have you thought about adding some assisted living to this?
I have, but assisting living does not count in our cost report, and currently, Lyndon has a nice assisted living here in Lyndon, and I did not want to compete with our surrounding area. You know, I feel that two communities are better than one, and that we both can be vibrant, but is there gonna be room for expansion? Yes, we would have room for expansion.
You still have two sides. One side was for more care, a little more, and one was, you know, for a little less?
We don't have two sides anymore.
Oh, you don't?
It's all on one side right now.
All on the east side?
Correct, and we would move them all to the west side, or to the south side, whatever.
Oh.
Down, down the B Wing hallway.
Which is.
So then you could, you could start construction to the east further, huh?
Yes. That would be part of it.
What was the capacity of that home at one time? When it was first built?
Eighty-eight beds.
Eighty-eight? Okay.
Boy, boy, figure two in the room.
And that, that was figure two in the room. There is, I believe, eight or nine that are single rooms, and the rest are all two. The new facility would all be one-bed facility, because that's the way the organization's going out, because you and I don't want to.
No, I agree with that.
Somebody else. And even if it's a spouse, we are gonna do one unit that would be, that could house two people for a couple. But most couples in today's society, they don't want to be in the same room with their spouse. They kind of like that separation, for whatever reason.
Does it change when you get any older?
So what's the, what's the plan start date on this?
Oh, but.
I mean, if you decide to go through with this and it all, your, your plans?
Work out? I would like to break ground next spring. So how we're, how we're gonna fund, fund this is, I'm hoping with the three million from the county commissioners, then we're gonna receive.
What's the difficulty? Excuse me, glad.
The legislature just passed, this past year, to give out $15 million to nursing homes and assisted living, and they talked about that's only gonna be for new construction right now, because there, I believe there's like 10 nursing homes left that are HRH, and they really need to be redone. So the priority of the North Dakota long-term care is hopefully to give those to the older facilities for the new ones. So I'm looking at $9 million USDA, and $5 million coming from, or, the Bank of North Dakota, which is, that's where that government fund came from, that they.
And you have those monies already secured?
They are not secured yet. Those funds don't come available until the end, later, I find out in the later part of July, which I figured those monies will, that you can speak for around the first of August, but I'm not, that has not been reduced to the long-term care yet.
What's the capacity of the Napoleon Nurse Room?
I believe it's 38, is what they went for.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
I thought that was bigger than that. Okay.
You can't find people who work.
It's deceiving, for no people to work. Isn't that a problem in the Strasburg Care Center, to find people to work? You have traveling nurses, do you not?
We have some traveling nurses. Actually, we have, we used to have a night nurse. We eliminated, eliminated the night nurse. Now we have a night nurse just on every third weekend. But our employees' age is getting over. We are the largest employer in Strasburg. We have 83 employees, full-time and part-time employees, in the city of Strasburg and the surrounding areas. We have a lot, a lot, we have some that come from South Dakota, some from the Strasburg area, and just the whole surrounding area from Litton, all of it. So back to the employees. When I got there, I've been there, in September, it'll be three years, we were spending right at $2.1 million a year in travelers, and they were still making that come out on the cost report, because the cost report's 586 pages, and it's very complicated. But we get paid by what our cost is, and so we can make that come out. Do I want to have all travelers? No, because what gives good care is our hometown people and staff. They know our residents, they, you know, I have one employee that's been with us, I would say 50-some years, and still speaks German, so a lot of our, our residents speak German fluently, and it's really nice to have some of our employees talk German to them with that. But right now, we're using travelers. This, next year, we should use about $700,000 versus the $2 million that we were using. And it fluctuates. Sometimes we have staff that need a surgery or whatever, and so a nurse that goes on leave for three or four months, then we have to bring travelers in for them. And we've been fortunate in the last couple years, just, I guess it's been three months ago, we just hired an RN. She was from the Litton area. She worked in worship, and now she's come over to us. And, and I think that it'd be easier to get staff to their facility versus, nobody likes the old, douchey type of facility that we're trying to be in.
Can you explain a little bit? What is the governance of the, of the nursing home? I mean, how is it ran and?
It's a five-member board.
Okay, okay.
And it was incorporated there in Strasburg by, some like-minded people got together in 1961, I believe, and started the proposal, and then it came to fruition in 1962.
Okay. They're appointed board members, are they not? They're appointed, correct?
Not appointed, they're asked for. I mean, anybody can be on the board. It's a five-member board.
Do they run for what, a five-year period, or?
Right now, because it's been hard finding board members, the term limits are three-year term limits, but there's no longevity period that we have in place right now.
Any other questions, guys?
How much was it from the state? I guess I missed that.
So we're looking at 18 million.
Five million?
Eight, oh, from the state. So I'm looking at a USDA loan for $9 million and a $9 million total of the bank in North Dakota, which is 18 million, but.
Five million.
Part of that's.
Oh.
Part of that bank. So what we are currently short, $2,761, $2,761, 826, and that's what I'm here, actually, I'm here to ask for the $3 million or something. It will cost us about $1 million to tear down the old facility because of the asbestos that.
Yeah, because of asbestos.
And so back then, even the cinder block, which I did not notice, has asbestos in it.
The flooring, I'm sure, has to do all that tile.
And the ceiling and the tile are all hot, and then where the boilers are, the.
Are they wrapped?
They are wrapped.
All the asbestos.
So that $3 million you're requesting, that would be over a 25-year period, is what that, like, the payment process would be, though? So that's the total?
Yes, that would be.
Because that would, I mean, rough math on that, it comes out to $120,000 per year, so that would be, I mean, in Emmett County's mills, that's about two and a half to three mills per year, so.
Is that what it would be?
I mean, if you went on $120,000 a year for 25 years to hit $3 million, which you asked him for 2.7, like you said, rough math, you're, you're right around two and a half to three mills per year, but you would have to.
Where would it, where?
Figure out, so.
Where would it be?
But, I don't know. I just did the gravity of the thought there, like, I don't, I don't have a suggestion of where it needs to come from, but that's what you'd be looking at, I mean.
Joe, can you research that for me? Senior programs right now, I brought the levy levitation up, it shows only two mills, but can you vote to do more? I don't know.
Yeah, I can take a look. There's also some, some prohibitions against financing private projects that we might have to look into, whether it's illegal for us to, you know, get into those.
To do a mail levy on something like that, you mean?
Just to devote county funds to a private project.
Would we be able to do like a sales tax and something like that?
I'd have to do some further research around.
I'd look into that, too, as well. Well, I just, I'm curious, too, because I know with the sales tax stuff, sometimes that's more cities than your specific counties, so.
Right.
That might be a question, even maybe more for Strasburg than for, not that Emmett County probably couldn't do it, but I know there's, with sales tax, I think you have to have a home rule charter, and then you have to form a committee, and the whole, I mean, it's a, it's not like you just create a sales tax. You have to create basically an entire entity that decides how it's managed, like, that's, like, sales tax is kind of a whole nother.
Interesting.
I know there has to be at least like a home rule, because that's why Burley County has like their home rule charter committee, and that, that, like, that is how the process of the sales tax has to go through, like, it's a.
What other county did you say put a mail levy on?
So Stanley and Richardson, they're, they're counties.
Stanley?
And Richardson.
What county?
Stanley and Richardson, and I don't know what those counties are. And then Condu did the mail levy.
That is, you've done it, probably.
No. Dallas North Dickinson, that's Manning Killer.
Okay.
Stand and Bill, they're.
Have you thought about fundraisers?
We have.
Okay.
I, I'm just not quite to that point yet. I, I do would like to invite every one of you down on August third, um, we're having our annual picnic again, it starts at four o'clock. We have a band come in, we set up a big tent, and, and treat hot dogs and hamburgers, and, and then have, um, some refreshments with them.
The big tent?
The big tent.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's worth it, huh?
Yeah, very good, the, the, the residents look forward to that every year, and, and the music that Colleen provides is just amazing.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
So, then we have the joyful voices also come in and help sing, I wonder if they can bring some.
Okay, anybody else, guys?
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, appreciate you coming in, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Brent Exstrom, Lewis and Clark Executive Director.
You still work there? What?
You still work there?
I would have fucking heard you a long time ago.
Some you just can't get with, you know?
Yeah, I, I go back a long ways.
I didn't come, I, I come down just to get abused by James, it's all.
We were kids back in the day.
We were kids in the day, we certainly were, uh, well, good morning, uh, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Brent Exstrom, I'm the executive director with the Lewis Clark Bell degree. Uh, we are located out of Mann, North Dakota, but we serve the ten-county area, and we have a number of programs that serve state by state. So I wanted to stop in today, talk about a few things that are going on within the, uh, the council and within the region, um, some different programs that we have. And as well as update you on a couple of projects that are going on that affect Emmett County. So, um, first off, you know, just to pass around a little one pager of what we do, a couple of things on there. Uh, one of the most recent projects that we did is we helped, uh, the acquisition of the, uh, formerly called the Hope Manor downtown. That's actually through our community, which was our hosting organization, um, to acquire that and rehab that, completed that backup and operational in downtown Lynn here. We've done a number of different, um, projects, uh, throughout the area over the past few years. I was trying to save a paper, so I didn't bring all of the list of projects, but I can certainly share that later. But, so the regional council, for those of you that aren't familiar with us, we've been around since nineteen sixty-nine, um, and we really do, um, we started off doing a planning and zoning, um, type of stuff, and, and we've really evolved now into doing more of a gap funding, um, for local businesses, uh, startups, uh, things like that, um, expansions of, of businesses throughout the, the region and state. We've grown significantly, and we've been able to do that by adding different companies as well as different programs that we have. So, uh, currently, we have four companies under the umbrella of the, of the, of the development group. The first one is the original Regional Development Council, that does gap funding, um, similar to, uh, to the ability that we did here with the Hope Manor. You know, C Bank was the lead bank on that, we just filled some of the gaps on that to make sure that that project went forward. Uh, we've done a number of other projects, um, in the area as well, uh, the, uh, I think it's the Transmission Travel in Hazleton. We just did that once, uh, a couple of years ago, as well, filling the gap there, working with the banks up there. But we did that, we also started, uh, because we started to create all these jobs and, and do these businesses throughout the state and throughout the region. We noticed that there was a shortage of housing, so we added a housing organization, um, and that's our community-based organization, that's the organization that actually, um, now fund, um, the, uh, the Hope Manor, it's called Broadway Manor, now, uh, Broadway Apartments. That one, and so, uh, we added that to do that, as well as it does single-family down payment closing cost assistance loans. So if somebody's going to buy a house, um, in, in Lynn or in Strasburg, um, we can help with that down payment, uh, for that system. Um, one of the big programs we have, and you can see in that brochure, is the EP two program. That program is created specifically for essential public, um, employees, um, anybody from, you know, county employees to, um, to schools, to teachers, to, um, nurses, any of your essential workers, um, it's a down payment program where they can get ten thousand dollars at four percent for ten years, it helps them get into the home. Um, the beauty of that program was, we were trying to, it's a lot easier to keep employees when they, when they own their home than when they rent their home. And so, um, not only does it help them to build wealth, but it also helps the big counties and the cities and the schools maintain the employees. We were seeing, especially in the western part of the state, where we're seeing a lot of, a lot of, um, employees get poached by other larger, um, you know, you, you, I'm sure you guys probably see that maybe sometime where your, your local deputies are, where they're getting poached by Burley County, because they can pay more, right? They have better benefits or whatever that is, right? We want, but it's a lot harder for them to move when they, when they own their home and become part of the community, so that's why we set up that program as well. Uh, one of the more recent programs that we have, um, that, um, we just got a couple of years ago, was the Meat Poultry Intermediate Lending Program. That is a program that we got, uh, it, it came out of the, uh, the COVID era, and what it was, they were trying to diversify the Big Four meat packers. So the Mordals and the Tysons of the world, when COVID hit and they shut down, it really pinched on the, the supply of, of meat. And so what happened was USDA came on and said, we need to diversify that, and so what they do is they, they came out with these grants, and they grant us the money, and then we make, and then we loan that money out to these businesses, um, and to, to, to expand the local production or the local manufacturer of, of meat. So, um, for example, we, while we, we, we helped finance Cloverdale for their expansion, so when they expanded it to doing the meat sticks and stuff like that. But we also did, um, the, if you're familiar with the, the new butcher shop up in Steel, North Dakota, that was a hundred percent financed by that program. And so we have that program available, so it's, it's really good, right, so if you have somebody, you know, I know you have the, the meat, um, market up here, if they want to expand, they can come to us, they, if it's, you know, it's low-interest loan money, like, so all the money that we do to businesses is loan money, so that we can revolve and do the next business, keep doing what we're doing. But if they came to us and said, we need a hundred thousand dollars in equipment, and it's, they want a ten-year term, it's one and a half percent interest. So today's interest margin is extremely low interest. If you say if it's twenty, uh, ten years to twenty years, it's two and a half percent interest, and it will go up to thirty years, and that will be at four percent interest. So if somebody, if you're aware of anybody, this is, it could be startup, it could be expansion, it could be real estate, it could be working capital, anybody that wants to expand in that meat poultry, uh, or, you know, processing, um, type of, uh, business, we can get into that, uh, we can help, you know, either, we could actually do a hundred percent of it, but we always like to work with our banks. The nice thing about that program is once it comes back in and revolves in, it's anything in the food chain industry except production and retail. So we can't do the cattle ranch, uh, but we can do value add, um, and we can't do the grocery store, but we can do the warehousing facility that could, if you, if five grocery stores wanted to get together, create, build a warehousing facility, we can finance that, right? Uh, we can finance refrigerators, so it's a program, it's in there, um, that's the biggest one that we have, we got fifteen million. We've actually been asked, because we were so successful in getting that fund, so we've been asked about another, um, CDFI, a community financial institution, has been unable to get their money out, so we're gonna get another fifteen million, um, so we have plenty of funds available for that, um, to get those funds out. And again, like I said, that because we're involved in loan funding, we can keep doing that. The last thing I'll talk about, and I'll open it up for any, uh, questions that you guys have, um, is, um, I, I went to the legislature, um, I'm not sure if some of you guys had to do, and I know what's going on, our board knows what's going on, I know you guys are, uh, under, uh, are getting, are gonna get pinched with the three percent caps and all the fun stuff that they did at the legislature, right? So I went to our board and I said, and, and so we dug into our budget, and as you're aware, the, the county dues that we've obviously had, um, from nineteen sixty-nine all the way through, uh, ten years ago, we were at point two mil, um, and that's what everybody, for all ten counties, about paid the same, point two mil. And then, when the, in, in the oh-eight, in that crisis there, where that, that, we looked at our budget, we said, let's, let's see what we can do. So at that point, we lowered it to point one five, um, and we did the same thing. So now, so when I, when the legislature came in, they started to say that we're capping this stuff, um, we, I went to the board and I said, and I looked at our budget, I said, I think we can do something. So we did look at our budget, um, and we are reducing it to a point one two five mil, so it's actually, so your dues this year are actually, um, are actually less than they were last year. So, uh, the dues that we're looking for, uh, for Emmett County is, is five thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Last year, it was, uh, six thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, so, um, it's almost a thousand dollars lower than it was last year. I think, we, we look at this as we're a team, we're trying to, we're all trying to get to the same spot, um, we're pinching our budgets a little bit, um, to hopefully, you know, obviously in the big picture of what you guys feel and the millions of dollars that you guys have, it, it's, um, it's not gonna be a massive reduction, you're not gonna be able to do the, the senior set, the senior set with it, you know? Hey, but there, there's like a point terrible, mil, that I just hung for you. So, anyway, so we did reduce tho- those mills, um, to try to help out. The other thing that we're doing, the last thing that we're doing is, um, the State of North Dakota actually, for the first time ever, um, funded some money to the regional councils, with the intent of us expanding our technical assistance, um, to the cities and the counties. And so what we're going to be doing is, um, is we're gonna be hiring our resource development director, and what their job is going to be, so. We're really good, in the last twenty years, we've been really good about, when somebody calls us and says, hey, I got a project, um, what's out there, right? What brands are out there, what loans are out there, we're really good about saying, well, here they are, right? But we don't have the capacity to help make that application. And so, the, the, the state is not giving us a lot of money, they're giving us some money, um, but we're using that, those funds to hire a person that basically they're going to be able to work with and help city and county officials, get city and county staff write grants, and actually do the process to get that application in. Instead of saying, here's a, you know, here's a, here's a grant to, to build, to do whatever, to build a playground, go ahead and apply for it, which most cities, you know, have part-time monitors. Counties, most counties have full-time monitors, but they don't have the capacity, they just don't have the time, and they don't have the expertise. So we're gonna have that on our staff, so if somebody from Emmett County, you have a project that you want to try to apply for a grant for, we can help not only get the information for the grant, but we can actually help write that grant. Now, obviously, we're not gonna be able to write eight thousand grants if every county and every city come in, um, but we will, um, do as much technical assistance with that as well, to hopefully, because there's a lot of programs out there, right? There's a, you always hear about all these programs, all this money out there, but nobody can ever access it because they don't have the expertise to do so, right? Or the time to do so, so we're trying to fill that gap to at least give a better chance of, of being more competitive in grant processes and, and, and things like that, so. That's kind of what we got going on, and open it up to any questions that you have, and, uh, open there.
Any chance you can do a three million dollar gap?
Yeah, that's the second time you've done that to me, and I was gonna ask about assisted living, and you did, and you jumped, and that was just gonna be, oh, you had a three million layer, I think you did it, so.
What's going on here?
I don't know.
You forgot your tooth, well, have a.
Stop listening to my phone calls, probably.
Un- unfortunately, unfortunately, no, we, I don't have that, uh, we don't normally, um, get into the realm of the assisted living, we do affordable apartments. And normally, that's usually federal programs, couple of, like, housing tax credit program, um, yeah, and then we also use the state funding, um, using the housing incentive.
Why don't we put a few residents to work in a meatpacking facility on one side of it, and feed the residents, and then separate?
I hope that, if, if we can make that happen, let's make that happen.
I would bet some of those people can butcher better than some butchers.
I bet they can. I bet they can.
But it's in the basement.
We are, we, we do definitely try to be creative, that would be a really creative solution, but yeah, if they wanted to put a slaughterhouse right on next to the facility, I'm not sure how the, uh, how the residents would appreciate that, but.
Brent, how far, does it, this is all, you do all North Dakota, right?
So depending on the program, if you look at the programs, there's ones that are labeled, uh, that are regional programs, those are set just to the ten counties. But as we've been, as we've gone out with access funds, we've got, we have a few of the programs, like the North Dakota Opportunity Fund, um, that came out of the, uh, state small business credit initiative back in the day, um, back under the Obama administration, um, during the, the, uh, the, the economic issues that we had back then. That one is like thirty-eight communities, and so, um, all of them are eligible for that, um, and then, but then, but we pulled in, it was, the way that was structured when they did that, it was all by population, so we pulled in Fargo, um, and Williston and Monterey City, so that kind of expanded what we were doing. This MPILP one, it originally started as just North Dakota, um, but since we're getting this additional fifteen million dollars that they asked us to, there's, there's a lot of money in North Dakota to get out, so we're actually gonna be multi-state in that one. But all of our housing programs are all statewide, and then we do the SBA five oh four program on that, on the CDC, and that's statewide as well. So depending on the program, um, but that's what I, I got, I have, um, four lenders just on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, commercial side. And I always say, the best way to find out is just call us, the call is free, we'll give you, you know, we'll give you all the information, and if we can't do it, um, or if there's a better deal out there, we're certainly, um, willing to, to do that. We're, all of our organizations are nonprofits, so anything that we make goes right back into, into the funds, so we have more of an impact. But it, it really is, um, dependent, but that's what our staff does, our staff helps these businesses and these bankers put these packages together. Sometimes we have three or four different loan funds into it, sometimes we have the five oh four, um, into it, um, other times, it's just quicker and easier just to do one fund, so. That's what we do as a, as an organization, that's part of the technical, so that's part of the funds that you guys, when you guys pay your dues, we use that to match funds that we get from Economic Development Administration for technical assistance, some of that business calls us, we don't have to charge that business for the time that we have to, so. Our quote-unquote kind of consulting that we do with them is free of charge to them.
How do you get the word out?
Oh, man, we try, we don't, hey, we got Facebook, all right, I don't, I, I don't, I don't do the Twitter thing and stuff like that, but, um, we do, like I said, we do have a month of newsletter, uh, like, for this MPILP thing, we, we've contacted all, you know, because they have their own, like, industry magazines, we've been advertising in the industry magazines, we try to get out to, you know, we go to the, the different conferences, whether it's the, we'll, we'll see you guys at Association of Counties, we'll be there. You know, so we try, we try to get out there as much as possible, you know, we're not, we're not Coca-Cola, right? I'm not gonna be advertising at the Super Bowl, right? So we try to, you know, the biggest, the biggest way that we get our information out on a lot of stuff that we do is, we meet with the banks, right? Their banks are our partners, and so we will meet individually with all of the bankers, um, and meet with these banks and go to their committees and stuff, and keep them reminding them of the programs that we have. Because we, I mean, we're in this together with them, right? We can't do this without them, so that's why we don't like to do a hundred percent financing on anything if we get a bank in there, but that's really, that's probably the most effective. It's also the most time-consuming and the most expensive, because it's one-on-one meetings, it's, it's driving down here, um, but that's what we do a lot of, so.
Most economic development places know, know pretty well, Brent's been to, like, Lynn, the city meetings and all.
We're always willing to, yeah, anytime you have, you know, in LIDC, of course Sharon Janulus on our board. And then Crystal Johnner at the bank, she's on our board, right? So, so we try to, uh, we try to have people that are, are on our board, um, and then we have the other boards as well, that, that are in the community, that know that and can promote what we do. And as I said, word of mouth is way better advertising than any advertisement on paper, but, so.
Yeah, we work, we do, it's quite a bit to City Lynn with little projects here and there all over.
Like to work more, like to work more, yeah, absolutely, but.
In my fourteen years on the council, we've done quite a bit, with Florida, and quite a bit.
We do, yeah, we have some internal buy-down programs, which help, we work with the banks on that stuff, um, that's been very successful and stuff, so. Anytime you guys have, like I said, any time one of your constituents says that they want to start a business, they want to expand, they want to do something like that, or if they're looking at apartments or housing or stuff like that, yeah, give us a call, because that's, we can watch you, whether it's our programs, as I said, I have staff that's been there, um, I've been there twenty-four years now. And I have other staff that's came from USDA, came from these different, um, places that have that expertise, and so we can get them, hopefully, to the, to the best deal to make that project work.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brent, appreciate it, yeah.
Good to see you, buddy.
Good seeing you.
Next item on the agenda, we got Broden on the phone here, uh, requesting an executive session under North Dakota Century Code forty-four dash oh four dash nineteen point one four, attorney consultation regarding case number zero eight dash twenty twenty-four dash CB dash thirty-six fourteen. We're gonna have to ask everybody to clear it. Okay, excuse us, thank you.
And then you're gonna.
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Make a motion, go to executive session, there's a second?
Hang on here a second, I would, I would suggest that we consult with our lawyer, make sure we make the proper motions and the proper way to do it before we.
So we don't stumble on this deal.
That's the proper way to word it.
So the motion should be to adjourn this meeting and to enter an executive session pursuant to the Century Code section that, uh, was just read there, forty-four oh four nineteen point one for attorney-client consultation.
I'll make that motion, adjourn this meeting and go into executive session.
So do I need to, is there a second to that? Second by biller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. How do we bring Broden up here on this intercom to speak?